The Honorable Speaker will address the Assembly this morning.
In Psalm 127, we are told that unless the Lord builds the house, those who build labor in vain; and unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchman stays awake in vain. These words are brought to life as we read the preamble of the Philippine Constitution, an attempt to build a country dedicated to God. We, the sovereign Filipino people, imploring the aid of Almighty God in order to build a just and humane society and establish a government that shall embody our ideals and aspirations, promote the common good, conserve and develop our patrimony, and secure to ourselves and our posterity the blessings of independence and democracy. Under the rule of law and a regime of truth, justice, freedom, love, equality, and peace, do ordain and promulgate this Constitution. We affirm that yes, the Filipino people believe that with the aid of the Almighty, we can build an amazing society, one filled with happiness and prosperity, brought about by faith in God, hope for the future, and love for our fellow men. It is time to build. Build relationships that are stronger than our disagreements, build communities that are able to embrace our differences, and to build a Philippine nation united in its fight against this virus and against every other challenge that we will face as a people and as a nation. In the past ten years of steady economic growth, if it has taught us anything, it is that our nation can overcome whatever challenge is placed before us. The dream of economic parity with our Asian neighbors can easily be a reality if, as a spiritual people, we continue to fight corruption in all areas of society and pray for guidance as we try to do what is right, gawin ang tama, in a world where doing wrong can be so convenient and can be so well rewarded. Sadly, while the decade of success has shown us how high we can go, it also exposed our vulnerability to natural disasters, like the COVID-19 or the new coronavirus pandemic. It showed us that the metrics used by our society for success, money, power, and position, are not only irrelevant in dealing with this crisis, they can at times even be a distraction and a hindrance to finding the right connection with the people in finding solutions. At this time, when the whole world is facing crises, a crisis unprecedented in scale, at least during our lifetime, the Filipino people expect that we, their elected representatives, will speak with all honesty, candor, and humility, and this is what the situation demands. The enormity, the challenges, and the severity of the crisis we face require much faith, sacrifice, and hard work, not just from our leaders, but from each and every one of us. This is not the time to be unclear as to the intentions of this House of the people. Instead, we must speak frankly and truthfully, surely about our hopes and aspirations, but also, and perhaps more importantly, about our uncertainties and the fears that our people are facing. We cannot sugarcoat the fact that our way of life, what we once looked and took for granted as being normal, is completely irrevocably, undeniably gone. It has forever been changed by this pandemic, and nothing we can do can bring it back. Everything from this point on should no longer be about recapturing the past. Huwag na po nating habulin 'yung kahapon. But we have to acknowledge in humility our mistakes. Surviving the present and building a greater future, a great future depends on it. Humble ourselves, pray, discern, work hard. But definitely, we need a plan, we need a roadmap. These are the hard realities I know for those of you who have lost loved ones. 'Yung mga hindi man lang nakapagpaalam, lalo po dun sa biktima ng COVID na sa isolation. At sa inyo po na mga nawalan ng trabaho, lalo po sa nawalan na ng trabaho na stranded pahaw at hindi makaaway. I expect that the very notion of someone telling you to move on is in itself offensive and hurtful. Wala po kaming masasabi that will not be insensitive. But that is not our intention. It's not our intention to just say "move on" or ignore the hurt that you are feeling. Please believe us, your representatives, when we say we understand your grief. Most of us may not have actually felt it, but we also have friends, relatives, and of course, our constituents who are suffering, and we see the suffering. And it is precisely because we know what you are going through that I cannot in good conscience stay silent on this. Grave illnesses require bitter medicine. We cannot afford to be weak, not at this time, not with this virus. For this, I am eternally grateful that God, in His wisdom and mercy, has granted us the leadership that the nation needs during this crisis. As I take comfort in the President's firm but fatherly hand, I am also supremely confident about the ability of the great nation to endure the worst as it has endured, overcome, and prospered in the past. But our faith in God and our thankfulness for a good President doesn't mean he doesn't need help and does not mean we should not pray for him for the right advisors, guidance, health, and protection. Yes, there is a long, hard road ahead of us, but there is nothing in the Filipinos' character which tells me that we will be unequal to the task. On the contrary, the Filipinos have tempered and molded by the hardest of faiths, and even during the darkest time of war, dictatorship, and economic crisis, or any other crisis that we have faced as a people. When the very politicians who were expected to lead the country foreshadowed their duties and shrunk from their responsibilities, it was the people themselves who proved that the Philippines will not go down easily. This is a reminder to our leaders. People will step up, so we have to do our best and we cannot fail our people. These are the same people who saw the need for change in 2016 and against overwhelming odds chose the right candidate to lead us, and it is in them that my faith for a better future firmly rests. Let us not delude ourselves with the thought that Congress is primus inter pares or the first among equals. No, I am here to tell you that if we, members of their House, who must rise to the occasion and fulfill the mandate that the people have entrusted to us, not just to represent them in these halls, but to be truly one of them in our hearts, in our minds, and in our actions. Di po pwedeng sabihin tayo ang VIP dahil tayo representante nila. Baliktad po, sila po ang VIP at tayo po ang lalaban para sa kanilang interes. It is in this spirit that we need to move together as one nation, move faster, move united, united in our goal to protect the weakest among us and create a better way of life, a better way of life for all Filipinos, not just for the privileged, the rich, and the powerful. Just to put things into perspective, a year ago, I spoke before this body with so much hope and confidence in our future. The economy was booming, we were riding high on a strong electoral showing by the administration. Poll after poll, the nation was finally feeling the effects of strong leadership of President Duterte. In other words, we were on our way to fulfilling promises of providing a safe and comfortable life for all. It was amid this backdrop of confidence and euphoria that Congress got off to a running start, and I have to thank the Majority Leader, Martin Ramaldes, the Rules Committee, the Minority Leader, Minority Leader Bishop Abante, and all the members of the House. We worked hard, we passed the budget in record time. It's a very good budget, as well as numerous key legislations, too many to enumerate, setting new records in productivity and efficiency compared to all other Congresses. We did this together, so thank you, brothers and sisters of the 18th Congress. When Taal erupted, bringing with it misery and grief for our kababaiyans in Batangas, Congress rose to the occasion and held a historic first session outside these halls and among our constituents. We went to them and listened to their problems, not as politicians looking for a vote, not as politicians wanted to be heard by a constituent, but as servants of the people seeking genuine solutions to their problems by listening to those who are most affected by the calamity. And even as we were struggling to cope with one crisis, the virus that now grips us was slowly rearing its head. Yes, this House did well in seeing the danger of COVID-19 and voicing our concerns as early as January. January palampo, paulit-ulit na tayo, now we have to focus on this. Despite the political noise, despite the lobbying for different kinds of controversial topics, during this time, sinabi po natin, kailangan tayo ng Batangas at parating ang COVID-19. But none of us ever anticipated the scale of the devastation and dislocation it would eventually rock our country. Hindi po natin napredikyon, wala pong nakakita. The fight to defeat COVID-19 showed us the necessity of protecting the environment, not just as a natural resource, but as a matter of survival. It taught us the value of hope during those times where all seemed to be lost and of fighting for what is right all the time, every time. It even inspired us to set aside personal animosities and work together for the good intentions to help our good nation. Right now, our greatest and most difficult task is to keep Filipinos safe and healthy while getting Filipinos back to work. Lives and livelihood, buhay, kabuhayan. We need to build and retool those industries that have been gutted by this pandemic, and in this endeavor, the government will be playing a significant role. I propose we strengthen the agriculture, tourism, and manufacturing sectors, augmented by robust investment in infrastructure, all kinds of infrastructure, tourism-related infrastructure, agriculture-related infrastructure, infrastructure for education, for health, and of course, for mobility. And of course, let's not forget, if this is an invisible enemy, there's also an invisible or not visible infrastructure, the infrastructure for the digital world. This can be the primary source of employment and growth, especially in rural areas. Let us take this opportunity to bring our kababaiyans home, not in boxes, but as the conquering heroes that they are. Properly supported and given the right opportunities, this returning OFWs will form the first wave of our offensive in the countryside. Armed with technology, training, and discipline, they have so much knowledge, they have learned so much from other countries. They have the ability to transform our economy practically overnight if we put the right plan in place. Let us look to the provinces as the new center of development. COVID-19 has shown us the weak underbelly of our big cities. How easy can they be brought down to their knees and with it, the whole nation? By disease and infection, we should never allow ourselves to be caught off guard again. This is a clarion call for all urban planners, engineers, and architects. The government, the people, need you. We need your ideas. Help us build a better Philippines by decongesting our cities and spreading the wealth to every area, every island, every valley, every hilltop, every mountain in the country. Hand in hand with this, we look forward, we look towards revitalizing the Philippine creative industry. Once the envy of Asia, but now a mere shadow its former glory. This week, the House leadership and anyone who would like to join us will be filing a bill that will establish the Department of Arts and Culture so that instead of being a casualty of COVID-19, Filipino creativity and artistry will be an integral part of our arsenal for recovery, and we will be targeting Asia and not just the Philippines. And when we say creative industry, this department will only be the first bill among others because when we say creative, this includes, for example, robotics, performing arts, anything that's precisely created by the mind. We must approach this problem and prepare as if we are at war, which to a large extent we are, not with a foreign aggressor, not with a local insurgency, but with an unseen enemy that shows no mercy, gives no quarter, and takes no prisoner. And while it sometimes brings out the best in us, many times it also brings out the worst in us. In the face of an evolving enemy and a fluid battleground, Congress needs, Congress needs to continue to adapt, innovate, and manage. If we are to stay above water until a vaccine or cure is found, which by the most conservative estimates will not be viable until the end of the year or early next year, at the soonest. In the meantime, we have to trust in God and remain strong. To the Filipino people, please know that we welcome your vigilance and ask you to continue to watch over this Congress and to cry the alarm whenever you see an abuse in our ranks. By all means, hold us to the highest standards of integrity and public service, but do not stand apart from us. We have to learn to agree, to disagree. Be our brothers and sisters in arms for a better normal. This is your house, and together with God, seeking his guidance, seeking his mercy and forgiveness, let us continue to build and make it, let us continue to build a strong nation. God bless the Philippines. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the Secretary General, we now call the roll.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives from the National Capital Region. Caloocan City, First District, Honorable Dale Along R. Malapitan. Second District, Honorable Edgar R. Erisif. Laspenya City, Loan District, Honorable Camille A. Villar. Makati City, First District, Honorable Romulo Kid Peña Jr. Second District, Honorable Luis N. Campos Jr. Malawan City, Loan District, Honorable Josephine Veronique R. Laxon Noel. Mandaluyung City, Loan District, Honorable Neptali M. Gonzalez II. City of Manila, First District, Honorable Manuel Luis Manny T. Lopez. Second District, Honorable Rolando M. Valeriano. Third District, Honorable John Marvin Yul Servo C. Nieto. Fourth District, Honorable Edward Vera Perez Maceda. Fifth District, Honorable Cristal L. Bagatzin. Sixth District, Honorable Benvenido M. Abante Jr. Marikina City, First District, Honorable Bayani F. Fernando. Second District, Honorable Stella Luz A. Kimbo. Montinlupa City, Loan District, Honorable Rosano Rufino B. Biazon. Novota City, Loan District, Honorable John Reynold M. Tianco. Paranyake City, First District, Honorable Eric L. Olivares. Second District, Honorable Joy Myra S. Tambunting. Pasay City, Loan District, Honorable Antonino G. Calixto. Pasig City, Loan District, Honorable Roman T. Romulo. Kason City, First District, Honorable Anthony Peter Onyx D. Crisologo. Second District, Honorable Precious Hippolyto Castillo. Third District, Honorable Alan Benedict S. Reyes. Fourth District, Honorable Jesus Bong C. Suntai. Fifth District, Honorable Alfred Vargas. Sixth District, Honorable Jose Christopher Y. Belmonte. San Juan City, Loan District, Honorable Ronaldo B. Zamora. Tagig City, Pateros, First District, Honorable Alan Peter Compañero S. Cayetano. Second District, Honorable Maria La Arni Cayetano. Valenzuela City, First District, Honorable Wesley T. Gachalian. Second District, Honorable Eric M. Martinez. From Region 1 Ilocos, Ilocos Norte with the city of Lawag. First District, Honorable Ria Cristina G. Fariñas. Second District, Honorable Angelo Marcos Barba. Ilocos Sur with the cities of Vigan and Candon, First District, Honorable Deograsias Victor D. V. B. Savelliano. Second District, Honorable Christine Singson Mihen. La Union, First District, Honorable Pablo C. Ortega. Second District, Honorable Sandra Y. Erigel M.D. Pangasinan, First District, Honorable Arnold Noli D. Celeste. Second District, Honorable Jumel Anthony I. Espino. Third District, Honorable Rose Marie Baby J. Arenas. Fourth District, Honorable Christopher V. P. de Venesia. Fourth, Fifth District, Honorable Ramon Monmon V. Guico III D.P.M. Sixth District, Honorable Tyrone D. Agabas. From Region 2 Cagayan Valley, Batanes Loan District, Honorable Siriaco B. Gato Jr. Cagayan, First District, Honorable Ramon C. Nolasco Jr. Second District, Honorable Samantha Louise Vargas Alfonso. Third District, Honorable Joseph Jojo L. Lara. Isabella, First District, Honorable Antonio Tony Pet T. Albano. Second District, Honorable Ed Christopher S. Go. Third District, Honorable Ian Paul L. D. Fourth District, Honorable Alyssa Sheena P. Tan. Fifth District, Honorable Faustino Michael Carlos T. D. III. Sixth District, Honorable Faustino Ino A. D. V. Nuevo Viscaia Loan District, Honorable Luisa Lloren Quaresma. Kirino Loan District, Honorable Juny E. Kua. From Region 3 Central Luzon, Aurora Loan District, Honorable Romel Rico T. Angara. Bataan, First District, Honorable Geraldine B. Roman. Second District, Honorable Jose Enrique J. Garcia III. Bulacan, First District, Honorable Cuia Jose Antonio R. C. Alvarado. Second District, Honorable Gavini Apol C. Pancho. Third District, Honorable Lorna C. Silverio. Fourth District, Honorable Henry R. Villarica. San Jose del Monte City, Loan District, Honorable Florida Rita P. Robes. Nuevo Isia, First District, Honorable Estelita B. Swansing. Second District, Honorable Michaela S. Violago. Third District, Honorable Rosana Ria V. Vergara. Fourth District, Honorable Maricel G. Natividad Nagaño M.D. Pampanga, First District, Honorable Carmelo Joan B. Lazatín II. Second District, Honorable Juan Miguel Macapagal Arroyo. Third District, Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Juan Pablo Rimpi P. Bondok. Tarlac, First District, Honorable Carlos O. Coanco. Second District, Honorable Victor A. Yap. Third District, Honorable Noel L. Villanueva. Zambales, First District, Honorable Jeffrey D. Conghun. Second District, Honorable Cheryl P. Deloso Montalia. From Region 4A Calabarzon, Batangas with the cities of Tanawan and Santo Tomas. First District, Honorable Elena Milagros Aileen Hermita Buahin. Second District, Honorable Reneo Rani E. Abu. Third District, Honorable Maria Teresa V. Coliantes. Fourth District, Honorable Leanda B. Bolilia. Fifth District, Honorable Mario Vittorio Marvi A. Mariño. Sixth District, Lipasiti, Honorable Vilma Santos Rector. Cavite with the cities of Cavite, Tres Martirias, and Tagaytay. First District, Honorable Francis Gerald Aguinaldo Abaya. Second District, Bucor City, Honorable Strike B. Revilla. Third District, Imo City, Honorable Alex A. A. Advincula. Fourth District, Dasmarinyas City, Honorable Elpideo F. Barzaga Jr. Fifth District, Honorable Dahlia A. Loyola. Sixth District, General Tria City, Honorable Luis John John A. Ferrer IV. Seventh District, Honorable Jesús Crispin C. Remulia. Eighth District, Honorable Abraham Bambol N. Tolentino. Laguna with the cities of Cobuyao, San Pedro, and Santa Rosa. First District, Honorable Dan S. Fernandez. Second District, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernández. Third District, Honorable Saul Aragonés. Fourth District, Honorable Benjamin C. Agarau Jr. Binyan City, Loan District, Honorable Marylin Len B. Alonte. Calamba City, Loan District, Honorable Joquin M. Chipeco Jr. Kason with the city of Losena, First District, Honorable Wilfredo Mark M. Enverga. Second District, Honorable David J.J. C. Suarez. Third District, Honorable Aletha C. Suarez. Fourth District, Honorable Angelina Helen D. L. Tan M.D. Rizal, First District, Honorable Michael John R. Duavit. Second District, Honorable Juan Fidel Felipe F. Nograles. Antipolo City, First District, Honorable Roberto V. Puno. Second District, Honorable Resurrección M. Acop. From Mi Moropa Region, Marin Duque, Loan District, Honorable Lord Alan J. Q. Velasco. Occidental Mindoro, Loan District, Honorable Josephine Ramirez Sato. Oriental Mindoro with the city of Kalapan, First District, Honorable Doi C. Leacion. Second District, Honorable Alfonso V. Umali Jr. Palawan with the city of Puerto Princesa, First District, Honorable Franz Chicoi E. Álvarez. Second District, Honorable Cyril Beng F. Abueg Zaldivar. Third District, Honorable Hill Cabarangay Jr. A. Acosta. Romblón, Loan District, Honorable Eleandro Jesús F. Madrona. From Region 5 Bicol, Albay with the cities of Legaspi, Ligao, and Tabaco. First District, Honorable Edsel C. Lagman. Second District, Honorable Joey Sarte Salceda. Third District, Honorable Fernando T. Cabredo. Camarines Norte, First District, Honorable Josefina B. Talliado. Second District, Honorable Marisol C. Panotes. Camarines Sur with the cities of Naga and Iriga. Second District, Honorable Luis Raymond L. Ray F. Villa Fuerte Jr. Third District, Honorable Gabriel H. Bordado Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Arnie B. Fuentebelia. Fifth District, Honorable Joseline F. Fortuno. Catanduane's Loan District, Honorable Hector S. Sánchez. Masbate with the city of Masbate, First District, Honorable Narciso R. Bravo Jr. Second District, Honorable Alyssa Olga T. Co. Third District, Honorable Wilton Tonton T. Co. Sorssagon with the city of Sorssagon. First District, Honorable Evelina G. Escudero. Second District, Honorable Maria Bernardita Ditas Ramos. From Region 6 Western Visayas, Aqulan, First District, Honorable Carlito S. Marquez. Second District, Honorable Teodurico T. Jaresco Jr. Antike Loan District, Honorable Lauren Legorda. Capis with the city of Rojas, First District, Honorable Emanuel Tawi Biliones. Second District, Honorable Fredinil Fred H. Castro. Gimaras Loan District, Honorable Maria Lucille L. Nava M.D. Iloilo with the city of Pasay. First District, Honorable Janet L. Garin. Second District, Honorable Michael B. Goriseta. Third District, Honorable Lawrence R. Defensor. Fourth District, Honorable Braden John Q. Biron. Fifth District, Honorable Raúl Boboy C. Tupas. Iloilo City, Loan District, Honorable Julian Jam L. Baronda. Negroes Occidental with the city of San Carlos, Cadiz, Bago, La Carlotta, Silay, Camankalan, Sagay, Victoria's, Escalante, Sipalay, and Himamailan. First District, Honorable Gerardo Pival Mayor Jr. Second District, Honorable Leo Rafael M. Cueva. Third District, Honorable Francisco Kiko B. Benítez. Fourth District, Honorable Juliet Marie de León Ferrer. Fifth District, Honorable Maria Lourdes T. Arroyo. Sixth District, Honorable Henaro M. Álvarez Jr. Boholot City, Loan District, Honorable Greg G. Gasataya. From Region 7 Central Visayas, Bohol with the city of Tac Bilaran, First District, Honorable Edgar M. Chato. Second District, Honorable Erico Aristotel C. Aumentado. Third District, Honorable Christine Alexi B. Tutor. Cebu, First District, Honorable Eduardo Eddie R. Gulyas. Second District, Honorable Wilfredo Willy S. Caminero. Third District, Honorable Pablo John F. García. Fourth District, Honorable Janis Z. Salim Bangon. Fifth District, Honorable Vincent Franco Duke D. Frasco. Sixth District, Honorable Emery Lollipop O'Wano Dizon. Seventh District, Honorable Peter John D. Calderón. Cebu City, First District, Honorable Raúl V. Del Mar. Second District, Honorable Rodrigo A. Abelianosa. Lapulapo City, Loan District, Honorable Paz C. Radaza. Negroes Oriental, First District, Honorable Joseline C. Lim Kai Chong. Second District, Honorable Manuel T. Sagarbaria. Third District, Honorable Arnolfo Arney A. Teves Jr. Siquehor Loan District, Honorable Jake Vincent Villia. From Region 8 Eastern Visayas, Biliran Loan District, Honorable Gerardo Jerry Boy J. Espina Jr. Eastern Samar Loan District, Honorable Maria Fe. R. Abunda. Leyte, First District, Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Second District, Honorable Lolita T. Javier. Third District, Honorable Vicente Ching S. I. Veloso III. Fourth District, Honorable Lucit Torres Gomez. Fifth District, Honorable Carl Nicholas C. Carey. Northern Samar, First District, Honorable Paul Ruiz Daza. Second District, Honorable Jose Jun L. Hong Jr. Samar, First District, Honorable Edgar Mary S. Sarmiento. Second District, Honorable Shari Ann T. Tan. Southern Leyte Loan District, Honorable Roger G. Mercado. From Region 9 Zamboanga Peninsula, Zamboanga del Norte, First District, Honorable Romeo M. Halosjos Jr. Second District, Honorable Glona G. Labad Labad. Third District, Honorable Isagani S. Amatong. Zamboanga del Sur, First District, Honorable Divina Grace Zamboanga del Sur First District Honorable Divina Grace C. U. Second District Honorable Leonardo L. Babasa Junior. Zamboanga City First District Honorable Cesar Jawo L. Jiménez Junior. Second District Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Delipi. Zamboanga Cebugay First District Honorable Wilter Sharkey Wi. Palma II. Second District Honorable Ann K. Hofer. From Region Ten Northern Mindanao Bukidnon with the cities of Malay Balay and Valencia. First District Honorable Maria Lourdes Acosta Alba. Second District Honorable Jonathan Keith T. Flores. Third District Honorable Manuel F. Zubiri. Fourth District Honorable Rogelio Neil P. Roque. Camiggin Lone District Honorable Savior Jesús D. Romualdo. Lanau del Norte First District Honorable Mohamed Khalid Q. Dimaporo. Second District Honorable Abdullah D. Dimaporo. Iligan City Lone District Honorable Frederick W. Siawo. Misamis Occidental First District Honorable Diego Nonoy C. T. Second District Honorable Henry S. Ominal. Misamis Oriental First District Honorable Christian S. Unabia. Second District Honorable Juliet T. Ui. Agandioro City First District Honorable Rolando Clarex A. Ui. Second District Honorable Rufus B. Rodríguez. From Region Eleven Davo Region Davo de Oro First District Honorable Y. Corat Zamora. Second District Honorable Ruell Peter S. Gonzaga. Davo del Norte First District Honorable Pantallón D. Álvarez. Second District Honorable Alan Aldu R. Duhali. Davo del Sur Lone District Honorable Mercedes D. D. C. Cagas. Davo City First District Honorable Paolo Z. Duterte. Second District Honorable Vincent J. García. Third District Honorable Isidro T. Ungab. Davo Occidental Lone District Honorable Lorna P. Bautista Bandigan. Davo Oriental First District Honorable Corazon T. Núñez Malanyaon. Second District Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario. Region Twelve Socergen North Cotobato with the city of Kidapawan First District Honorable Hasulito Joel S. Sackdalan. Second District Honorable Rudy S. Kawagdan D. P. A. Third District Honorable Jose Ping Ping A. Tehada. Sarangani Lone District Honorable Rogelio Ruell D. Paciao. South Cotobato with the cities of General Santos and Coronadal First District Honorable Sherlin L. Bañez Nograles. Second District Honorable Ferdinand L. Hernández. Sultan Kodarat First District Honorable Princess Rihan M. Sakaluran. Second District Honorable Horacio P. Swan Sing Junior. Pang Samoro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao. Basilan Lone District Honorable Mujiv S. Hataman. Lanau del Sur First District Honorable An Sarudin Abdul Malik A. Adyong. Second District Honorable Yasser Alonto Balindong. Maginana with Cotobato City First District Honorable Dato Rooney Q. Sinsowat Senior. Second District Honorable Esmael G. Mangodadato. Sulu First District Honorable Samir A. Tan. Second District Honorable Munir M. Arbison. Tawi Tawi Lone District Honorable Rashidin H. Matba. From the Cordillera Administrative Region Abra Lone District Honorable Joseph Santuninho B. Bernos. Apayau Lone District Honorable Elia C. Bulut Junior. Benguet Lone District Honorable Eric Yap Caretaker. Baguio City Lone District Honorable Mark Ogo. Ifogau Lone District Honorable Solomon Chungalau. Kalinga Lone District Honorable Alan Jesse C. Mangawang. Mountain Province Lone District Honorable Maximo Y. Dalog Junior. From the Karaga Administrative Region Agusan del Norte First District Honorable Lawrence Law Fortune. Second District Honorable Maria Angelica M. Amante Matba. Agusan del Sur with the city of Bayugan First District Honorable Alfél M. Bascug. Second District Honorable Edibong G. Plaza. Dinagat Islands Lone District Honorable Alan D. Ecleyo. Surigao del Norte First District Honorable Francisco Jose Bingo F. Matugas II. Second District Honorable Robert Ace Barber's. Surigao del Sur First District Honorable Prospero A. Pichai Junior. Second District Honorable Johnny T. Pimentel. Partilist Representatives. Juan Pacman. Honorable Michael L. Romero. Honorable Enrico A. Pineda. A. Teacher. Advocacy for teacher empowerment through action, cooperation, harmony towards educational reform. Honorable Maria Victoria V. Umali. Ambis Owa. Ang Asosyon Sang Manguma Ngabisaya Owa. Mangumua Incorporated Honorable Sharon S. Garin. Abang Lingkod Honorable Joseph Stephen Caraps Espaduano. Abono Honorable Conrado M. Estrel de Third. Act CIS. Honorable Eric Goyp. Josirin T. Tulfo Honorable Rowena Nina Taduran. Act Teachers Honorable Franz S. El Castro. Agap Honorable Rico B. Heron. Akobicol Honorable Elsaldi Esco Honorable Alfredo A. Gardín Junior. Akobisaya Honorable Sunny S. Lagon. Akopadayon Honorable Adriano A. Ebkas. Alona Honorable Anna Marie Villarasa Suárez. Amin Honorable Amihilda J. Sangkopan. Anwaray Honorable Florencio G. Noel. Ana Kalusugan Honorable Michael T. Defensor. Ang Probenciano Honorable Altred C. De Los Santos Honorable Ronnie L. Ong. Apec Honorable Sergio C. Dago. Bahay Honorable Naelia Bainto Aguinaldo. Bayan Muna Honorable Carlos Isagani T. Sarate. Honorable Ferdinand Argaite Honorable Eupemia Cafemia C. Culiamac. BH Honorable Bernadette BH Herrera D. BHW Honorable Angelica Natasha Co. Buay Honorable Jose L. Lito Atsensa Junior. Sibak Honorable Eduardo Brother Eddie C. Villanueva Honorable Domingo C. Rivera. Koopnatko Honorable Sabinyanos S. Canama. CWS Honorable Romeo S. Momo Senior. Diwa Honorable Michael Edgar Y. Agdipay. Dumper Honorable Claudine Diana Bautista. Gabriela. Women's Party Honorable Arline D. Brosas. GP Honorable Jose Gay GP Parjernos. Kabataan Honorable Sarah Jane Ilago. Kabayan Honorable Ron P. Salo. Kalinga Honorable Irene Gay F. Saulog. Kusug Tausug Honorable Sherney A. Tan. LPGMA Honorable Alan U. T. Magdaló Honorable Manuel DG Kabotchan de Third. Magsasaka Honorable Argel Joseph T. Kabat Bat. Manila Teachers Honorable Virhilio S. Laxson. Marino Honorable Sandro L. González Honorable McNell M. Losotan. OFW Family Honorable Bobby D. Paciao. Patrol Honorable George Patrol Bustos. PBA Honorable Jericho Jonas B. Nograles. Filreca Honorable Presti C. De Jesús. Probenciano ako Honorable Rudy C. Sarsfarinhas. Honorable Jose Bonito S. C. Singson Junior. Ram Honorable Aloy Lim. Recoboda Honorable Godofredo N. Guya. Sagip Honorable Rodante D. Marcoleta. Senior Citizens Honorable Francisco G. Datol Junior. TGP Honorable Jose Bong G. Teves Junior. Tingog Sinirangan Honorable Lieda Marie K. Romualdes. TUCP Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that three hundred one members responded to the call.
With three hundred one members in attendance, which includes twenty one members physically present and two hundred eighty who are participating now via telecommunications and/or other online technologies like Zoom and Facebook, the Chair declares the presence of a forum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Resolution 1059.
To any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution 1059 is now in order. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title and the text of the said resolution.
House Resolution Number 1059. Resolution informing the Senate that a quorum being present, the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Resolved as it is hereby resolved by the House of Representatives, that the Senate be informed that a quorum being present, the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Adopted, signed Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, Majority Leader, and Bienvenido Emma Bante Junior, Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution 1059.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1059. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. House Resolution 1059 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Resolution Number 1060.
To any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution 1060 is now in order. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title and the text of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 1060. Resolution informing President Rodrigo Rova Duterte that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Resolved as it is hereby resolved by the House of Representatives, that President Rodrigo Rova Duterte be informed that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Adopted, signed Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, Majority Leader, and Bienvenido Emma Bante Junior, Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution 1060.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1060. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. House Resolution 1060 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Concurrent Resolution Number 10.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of House Concurrent Resolution Number 10 is now in order. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title and text of the said resolution.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 10. Concurrent Resolution providing for the Senate and the House of Representatives to hold a joint session to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines. Resolved by the House of Representatives that the Senate concurring that both Houses of Congress of the Republic of the Philippines hold a joint session on Monday, July 27, year 2020, at four o'clock in the afternoon, at the session hall of the House of Representatives, to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines. Adopted, signed Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, Majority Leader, and Bienvenido Emma Bante Junior, Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Concurrent Resolution Number 10.
There is a motion to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 10. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. House Concurrent Resolution Number 10 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, in order to give the House Secretariat time to transmit to the Senate the copies of the resolutions we have just adopted, and until we have received the messages from the Senate on the resolutions they have adopted, I move for the suspension of the session.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the messages from the Senate, and I move for the consideration of the same.
Please proceed.
Secretary General.
Senate Resolution Number 471 entitled Resolution Informing the House of Representatives that quorum is present in the Senate, and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the second regular session of the Eighteenth Congress of the Philippines. And Senate Resolution Number 472 entitled Resolution Informing the President, President Rodrigo Rova Duterte, that a quorum is present in the Senate, and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the second regular session of the Eighteenth Congress of the Philippines.
To the Archives.
Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 12 entitled Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convened for its second regular session of the Eighteenth Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses.
To the calendar of business for the day.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 12.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 12 is now in order. The Secretary General is hereby instructed to read the title and text of the said resolution.
Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 12. Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convened for its second regular session of the Eighteenth Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses. Resolved by the Senate, the House of Representatives of the Philippines concurring that a joint committee of both Houses of Congress be created, composed of nine members, three to be appointed by the President of the Senate, and six to be appointed by the Speaker of the House of Representatives. To notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convened for its second regular session of the Eighteenth Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses. Adopted, signed Juan Miguel F. Zubiri, Senator.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 12.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 12. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 12 is adopted.
In view of the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 12, authorizing the creation of a joint committee of both Houses to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress is convened and ready to hear his message on the part of the House, I move that the following be appointed to the joint committee. Honorable Paolo Z. Duterte. Honorable Luis Raymond F. Villafuerte Junior.
Honorable Reneo I Abu. Honorable Jesús Crispin C Remulia. Honorable Janet L Garin. Honorable Abraham N Tolentino.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The members of the House of Representatives so named are hereby appointed to the joint committee and are requested to immediately discharge their responsibility.
In order to give the members of the joint committee time to perform their assigned task, and until the House counterpart is ready to report back their accomplishment to this House, I move for the suspension of the session.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, we have received a report from the notification committee that the President has been informed that Congress will convene in a joint session at four o'clock this afternoon to hear his State of the Nation address. Mr. Speaker, we wish to remind the members of this chamber that those physically present today must be here an hour before the joint session at four o'clock this afternoon, and members who will attend through online technologies must register and log on the appropriate platforms at least an hour before the joint session at four o'clock this afternoon.
The remarks of the Majority Leader are duly noted.
Mr. Speaker, to give way to the joint session at four o'clock this afternoon, I move that we adjourn the session until three o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is adjourned until three o'clock tomorrow afternoon.